So in lieu of kind of a traditional staff report, I'll kind of go over the application where we are now. We did get some updated materials from the applicant earlier today, which you have printed in front of you. I was able to go over those this afternoon and mostly figure out what we have and what we still need. But we can talk through those and then the commission can ask any questions that they want. Eric, if you can pull up the overall site plan?
Yep. Scroll down here. Okay. So it says architectural site plan.
That'll work. And I do believe this is the older version. So the site plan has been updated since this version.
I can check it, yeah.
In general, this will work for now. So we're talking about two main buildings essentially. So one, which is labeled as Building F on the top of the screen would be a three-story self-storage facility. And then the rest buildings, A through F as they're labeled on that sheet, would be one-story and connected by a variety of overhangs, making it technically one building. So the property is surrounded on three sides essentially by residential. There's a variety of landscaping in place and shown, proposed on the map to act as a buffer. There's a little bit of parking down in the southwest corner there, kind of along the Corroy Road entrance. And then the rest of it would be drive aisles. Because it's surrounded by residential on three sides, there is a hundred-foot setback from whenever there's a residential property. So those are all observed. And then there are also setbacks from Gooding Road and Corroy Road. So we had prepared a memo in advance of this meeting, and Eric, if you can pull that up when you get the chance, we can kind of go through those items. So we, as zoning staff, had gone through the application and made a list of things that we still needed to see or needed to be changed. So the applicant again did provide updated materials this afternoon, and I can kind of go through and check some of those off our list so that we don't have to go over things that they've already submitted. So in terms of their checklist, and I'll give Eric just a second to pull it up here. So we had asked for a legal description of the property to be added that was sent over this afternoon, so we're good there. So items A through E on our memo, which was development name on the cover page, names and addresses of the applicant and owners, description of the buildings and their uses, as well as spaces of construction, and some information regarding the existing zoning. Those are items A through E, and those have all been added to our satisfaction. One thing that we will still need is item F. The list of existing rezoning case numbers for adjacent parcels should be shown on the plans. We can help you, but we can provide those numbers to you because they're not publicly accessible offline. So we can send you those, but they should be shown on the final sheets. We asked for a list of existing deed restrictions or confirmation that there are none. That has been provided. We asked for a letter from the county engineer regarding feasibility of surface drainage. That was provided by the applicant today. We also asked for letters from the Health District for confirmation of water and sewer. So we did receive the letter for water. I believe we're still, we'll still need confirmation that public sewer is available. If you can send that over when you get the chance, please. One thing that we are still missing is setbacks distances shown from proposed buildings and structures to the property lines. So as it's shown on the plans currently, you do show the setbacks themselves, but what we'll want to see is the actual distance measured from the buildings to any property lines instead of just where the setbacks are. Eric, if you could go up to the previous page. Alright, so for those following along, I'm on item K there. So bulk height and spatial diagrams, those were provided. Building floor plans, we still don't have. The applicant did explain that they really won't have the final floor plans until the final engineering is done. So those items are still outstanding. We did receive item M, the exterior elevations with the materials called out. We do have color renderings with the color palette using the Muncil color system. I think we're sufficient with the colors that have been provided. If you have the Muncil charts available and ready to go, those have been in Orange Township zoning applications for years. I'm not entirely sure of, but if you have them, they would be good. Rooftop mechanical locations and screening, those again were explained by the applicant. Might be nice to address those items as well. Sidewalks were added to the updated site plan to our satisfaction. We will still need to look at a few items regarding parking. It's one of those where the requirements in the overlay district lay out parking standards by use, and this use is not included in our list. So we will have to figure out how best to determine those. I do have some additional questions for parking as well. For item R, on the next page, we did receive the lighting plan and mic fixture details. I didn't really get a chance to verify those in depth, but we do have them, so we will review them and get back to you if anything needs to be changed. So I will note, in the updated plans, they did kind of standardize and make consistent the names for the buildings. In some sheets on the initial submission, they were labeled as different letters, so I believe those are cleaned up now. For T, we, there was signage that was included in the initial submittal. So I think we're mostly good there, but I'll have to take a deeper dive into that as well. And then one item for you, and we can discuss this. Technically, the setback from the right way shouldn't be landscaped because it is along the right way. Obviously, there is deterrent there with the power lines that go through. So I understand that there are valid reasons for not including that, but you may want to address that with the commission as well. Onto the final section. Building B was adjusted just slightly to comply with the maximum forty-foot setback. The updated plans, it is now in compliance. The building-to-lot width ratio, we will need to figure out. And then lot coverage calculations will also need to be provided just to show that it's under that eighty percent and hard scape requirement. Or eighty percent, you know, eighty percent part of these surfaces. Garbage areas are now shown on the plans, so the trash areas would be screened kind of within the larger, the mix of buildings in the center of the site. The applicant did confirm that no outdoor storage is planned as part of this application. We did confirm, it was a little hard to see in the renderings for the single-story buildings, but they do have a pitch roof. So thank you for clarifying that. And then for item G, sidewalks were added to the building entrances. Alright, that concludes what I have on my list. So I will turn it back over to the commission to ask any questions or if the applicant wants to give a presentation or overview of the project.
Thank you very much. Anybody like to give a presentation for this?
Not particularly, but we're here to...
Okay, well, here's the one that was I, this is the twenty-three overlay project. I'm interested in anything that is different than completely required, that's all the complete requirements for the twenty-three overlay.
We aren't asking for any diversions.
No, okay.
No, I think we as a mind to the discussion and clarification, but we do not want any divergences whatsoever.
Okay, I think what Robin had about that landscaping of that portion is...
That's what we're going to discuss. Where the power lines are all limited and both it's a new build zone, so how they will calculate that in terms of street front coverage. I'm trying to state my name.
Yeah, go ahead, just for the record.
Okay, for the record...
Sorry, if you wouldn't mind speaking into the microphone as well, so that would be hard.
Would you like us to step up?
Yeah, if you don't, if that's easier.
For the record, Christine Trabellus, I'm an architect at Archall Architects, forty-nine East Third Avenue in Columbus, Ohio. I'm here representing our office, Archall, who has been working with the applicant on this project. And like I said, some of the items, we do not want any divergences. But some of the items, we do need some clarification on in particular. There is those large power lines that sort of go diagonally through the sites. We're not sure how to include them in the street front coverage, which was listed as one of the potential divergences. We're also not sure in terms of landscaping that corner. We can provide shrubs or bushes, but whatever we put there, we need permission from AEP in the power lines. So I'm not sure how to address that either. So we're looking for guidance from you all on how to handle some of these outstanding issues.
Well, one of the questions I have, basically looking over this, is unusual for a storage facility to have a three-level type part of this building. Is that for offices? What is that to be used for?
So Archall office has done several storage facilities. Some are just your standard drive-up, which is this series of one-story buildings that are corridor road, except usually if we're trying to put the, maybe the interior, so it's not, I don't wanna say an eye store, but that is screened from the surrounding area. But we also have done two, three-story storage facilities that will have elevators. Those are the ones that are also usually climate-controlled and things of that nature. So there are some in the township. I think there's one off of, I wanna call it Flares Parkway, Palat Road, by the railroad tracks. That's like a two-story, three-story facility. So that is what we're looking at. That would be the one off of Gooding Boulevard. The height right now is approximately thirty-six feet in height, and that is with the parapet, so it's not any higher than the residences in the neighborhood, which are usually have thirty-five feet to the bridge line. The one-stores are about sixteen. It depends on where they have cable loose with ridges and how far they span. It's a one-twelve slope, so for twelve feet, you get one foot up. Does that explain your question?
Yeah, it does. Well, this facility being manned twenty-four seven?
This is Calhoun Ride, Rockwood Partners, and that looking here. We'll have local hours, seven to seven, or we'll have somebody on site.
Will they live on site or they just...
No, they won't live on site. They're just working in an office. They'll have neighbors working in an office, but we're there, they'll move in.
So one of the buildings in the complex off of, like, the corridor road will have an office, and that will be climate-controlled, restroom and whatever.
And that's the area you would come in and rent, right?
Exactly. That's where there'd be like a control to access to, and you would come in and then...
There's no boxes, so just...
So to answer your question about the power lines, you can't put any woodie steps up because of nerve restrictions. So we can't override the federal regulatory, so. So, yeah, I think that's a three-forty-five line, no, maybe three-forty-five KP, that might work. Yeah, yeah, it's, so, yeah, so that answered your question there. And then, security, are you guys, you're gonna have this fenced in?
Fenced in, yeah. Some of the buildings will be used as fence as well. We'll have cameras. It would be extremely well with, you know, gate controls, things of that nature.
When you, and we haven't seen the lighting plan, but you received the lighting plan, is that correct? You know, one of the questions I'm wondering about is the light on the edge to ensure that it's not like spilling over and kind of impacting the neighbors.
Of course.
But that's, the light has been focused back toward the...
Absolutely, that's our intention. You know, I've driven past the site. I've been to the site many times. It's a quiet, dark neighborhood, so all the light will be focused on the interior, and there'll be pack lights on the buildings so they're not so far overhead that they're casting light outside of the ground.
Do you have any other buildings here in town that...
Uh, no, or on London Road.
That's similar to this one?
Uh, similar, but obviously there's different elevations up here. Here, we're not gonna have any outdoor storage. They'll all be enclosed.
So no RVs or...
Absolutely not.
No RVs.
So that's a interior, you know, what...
Yeah, we're not even considering having enclosed RV storage, because that brings a whole nother issue of fire protection and ventilation, all that other stuff. So this is strictly just people have too much stuff, they need someplace.
I'm at a loss as to how we could possibly help you with those, with that landscaping and the power lines.
Well, we really can.
That's what I mean. That's what I see as well.
Yeah, no, it's just unfortunately, you can't really landscape there because, you know, woodie stuff. Plans can be in there. The only, I mean, you can mount it up, it can't be more than, you're not gonna mount it up fifteen-four, anything fifteen-four or above can't be under there. It's a high level, so when you mount it, you have to equal that threshold.
So right now, from the site plan, that's where drive-on retention, if you wanna...
Yes, fine. Good evening, my name is Ron White. I'm a crossing waters engineering fellow. Okay, it's a sugar bottle, a little bit dry. I've been doing, it's like design engineering, and I've been doing storage facilities for about thirteen years here in this business. Yes, the area that we're gonna utilize with the, with the no-wheels and so, and the areas that would be at the AEPs, would only be utilized pretty much for, you know, one-traveling, go between two building areas, and a drive-on area for stormwater retention.
Did you say that you're gonna have fencing? And the building would be...
Certain parts of some of the buildings will be used as security fence because they will have doors or access on the other side. And that's only the building that bunks up to the drive-in.
Well, if I'm a client for the storage unit, I would have to kind of cut into your complex to access mine.
That's correct, yeah.
Between the building and those thirty-foot drive-in.
And you're gonna have a key card. You'll have codes.
Usually it's either a code or a key card or something like that. There's an office if you need boxes or, you know, having problems getting in, but it'll have to be with the tenants there.
And each code that you need will know that you're in an hour.
Now, can the tenant who rents there go in after seven PM and before seven AM, or is it just seven to seven?
Yes, but it likely won't be twenty-four hours.
Okay.
So we usually have a cutoff.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, because nobody wants to spray out in the dark, midnight, move in or move out or anything like that. I know there's been concerns about like traffic and how many people. Some of the facilities that our office has done, if they're lucky, they get like one person an hour. It might be more at peak hours, like maybe on weekends, or, you know, before or after work, people talking, not giving up. But generally, their gate count will count like maybe twenty people, four to twenty-four hours. So there's not a lot of parking because of that. Then we can discuss, both the township in terms of parking counts, because we don't foresee a lot of people there beyond maybe one attendant possibly being there. So it shouldn't also, there's no traffic study because it seems to trigger any, or a traffic study.
And we don't put electricity or light bulbs in the unit, so people aren't working out for them, so I think it's a workshop, it's not our intention.
And only the large three-story buildings that are currently climate-controlled, plus portions of the one-story around the office would be climate-controlled. So it's not like it's...
It'd be desirable, but...
Exactly. You said it.
So I know this question's gonna come up with the community, carbon control.
Absolutely, you know, it's a budget item for us. We have, you know, crews that come out very, you know, monthly. We have traps everywhere.
Because I know that's probably what you're gonna...
Well, of course, every time we develop any site, you know, stir up the ground, and there's a lot of...
And what is stored in there sometimes.
Of course, yeah.
Hopefully that will be the case. We also want to note that it's not like we're having a big dumpster for peep-in. So we, there are sofas or, you know, lamps or whatever. It's a very small, just in our office, which we're trying to discourage that. Nobody wants to see that. And we will follow, the architecture site plan does not have a dumpster location yet, and we can go ahead, and we'll address that for the trustees. There's some coordination that needs to occur. And like I said earlier, we do not have final engineering, so we do have elevations, but we don't have a floor plan because we don't know where the structural grid's gonna go yet. So the windows might shift a little bit, or the egress doors for safety might shift a little bit as well, depending upon the layout of the storage facility and the structural grid. So I know a floor plan was requested, but we do not have that at the time. If we have one for the trustees, we could present it, but it's a work in progress.
Yeah, I think the dumpster is probably gonna be Christine, you know how that works.
Yeah.
And for the record, Christine Trabellus is a member of this board who has recused herself because she's part of this project. So, and thank you very much. I've found Christine's involvement that you haven't used any color colors. Yeah, I don't see those. I'm, I see your work here.
Yes, so part of, and I don't know, Robin, if you want them, if you present them as evidence, whether you wanna call it, is I realize that it's probably difficult to read the color coding of facade and the renderings with recovery notes because it wasn't packaged perhaps in the best manner. But we do have samples of metal colors provided by DMI. Pretty much most metal manufacturers have similar colors, dark bronze, stone, whether it's DMI or some of the other, Carlisle or some of the other manufacturers. We've also, I've procured paint chips for you all. Most manufacturers don't use Muncil colors. They use their little manufacturer name and number and what have you. So I can present these, or Robin, if you prefer, if you could give us the set of Muncil cards, I can outline which colors you are using, whichever you prefer. Would you like samples or...
Since you have them, we...
So you guys don't really have an estimate of how many parking spots you need outside of the office then?
Typically, right now, at the, on the revised site plan, we have, of course, a handicap spot up closest to the office. And right there, that's a very, like, the southwest of the corner of the building A, the single-story. We have two RE spots right there as well for customers. Inside, once you get inside the gates, we do have valves, I believe, or some additional. Typically, you don't need no longer places because the client wouldn't necessarily come in, drive to their spot around that sort of parking, or walk in all their mattress or whatever, you know, or feed down the street, you know, to get to do their, to their unit per se. So it's typically, they, we make the drives wide enough that you have multi-vehicles crossing through and let someone still park there along the side of their unit.
Does the overlay spell out any parking, or do they let this go because of what kind of facility it is?
I think that's, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not listed in one of our uses that we have parking counts for.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
You're just not one of the uses, okay.
So we don't anticipate wanting two customers that don't have data access to be in the office at any one time. So we have two spots outside, and then one for our employee there. And then if we have our regional manager or somebody like that visiting them, they will have interior data access. They can park inside. That's all we envision the activity to be.
That all makes sense. Has the fire department seen this yet?
Yes. They need a, a turning radius exhibit and a hose length exhibit for the, you know, fire hose length.
One is often...
It would be, like, if you're looking at the salt, what is on that, south, east, or is that the deal? It would be the very end of, it's called the southern, the very southern portion of that, something to the square, eight hundred.
And then the parking for the climate-controlled areas that, right at the front of that building A, is that climate-controlled area, or is it northern part?
Uh, that's climate-controlled, and we'll have spots that are called as loading zones.
You need a lot of that, sorry.
Up beside the building before the vendors.
Okay.
So people will go in, they'll bring their stuff on a cart, and then they'll go up the elevator, and they'll have their car parked right there. There'll be a couple of those along the side.
We might wanna show that.
Yeah, so, and if I can jump in, so, yes, it would be good to show those parking spots and loading spots around that building because that was a question of mine. And another thing, so I was going through the text again today, and there is a requirement for off-street loading spaces per every two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. So as long as you have loading spaces somewhere that match up with the total square footage of the building, you should be fine. But just to make sure that you have.
And my other question is, so these, these renderings here as far as what the facade may look like, this is what it may look like, or this is what it's going to look like?
Actually, the rendering, I think we had a discussion that they might be revised slightly because we're removing some of the access drives. So where you see some of the doors, they will no longer be apparent.
Yeah.
So I know we had that discussion internally where there isn't perhaps a loading area on Gooding Boulevard where you see some of those days, they will no longer be there. So the question to y'all is, do you want, dare I say, fake windows or some sort of architectural detail there instead of those loading days? Or, like I said, we're, when they revised the site plan, it was a little too late for architecture to come back and revise the elevations. So that will have to be accomplished off of the trustee meeting, and hopefully by that time we'll have a better building footprint where structure is. So that is one area that is in flux. So suggestions are more than welcome.
Yes, I, I think you should have, say, more than, I think should be aesthetically pleasing as much as possible wherever cars and kind of, so, you know, this is facing one direction, right? What does it look like from the, on the, right, this is on the corner, right, two different rivers, right? So...
There is a, where the site plan is, we have Gooding Boulevard elevation and the Corroy Road elevation. The issue with those... The issue with those elevations is we try to show sort of what's up front and then what's in the background. And sometimes that doesn't visually treat well or else it'll all be sort of gray. But we try to enhance the elevations both on Gooding Boulevard, especially the large three-story climate controlled building with, you know, anchors that I ran. And then the same thing with the quarter way road elevation, we try to enhance that elevation so it's not just a bunch of doors. And then one thing also we can discuss is we have landscaping because we're trying to screen the neighbors from this because that, I know, is one of the concerns, especially if you're not commercial, next to residential.
And one thing I would add, and I, you know, I think you did address it somewhat, but with the three-story building, because there are, I see that you have proposed access doors on that east elevation, just making sure that there is sufficient screening between Gooding and that elevation to help screen those doors since they will be living on that side.
Yeah, just leaving the, you know, I know that we gave some paint chips or some color students or whatever, so I don't know what the color student should be. Green seems loud if I'm living in the neighborhood. Just trying to be as, definitely don't want the orange, but you know, whatever. It's aesthetically pleasing as much as possible. Which brings up a question in general sense. Have you connected with the neighbors yet and had conversations on any of their thoughts there, but just as proposed?
We have not. We received a communication today from the neighbor and intended to, we have not had that conversation today as we just got.
Any plans to do that just in a, prior to your?
Prior to the trustee meeting, I'm sure.
Any further questions from the board? Well, open up to folks who have arrived here, the audience. If you please come forward, state your name and address and you have three minutes to.
Joel Hunt, the two-five-eight Mark's Director. Any consideration about what will be, as we're some security stories, go to the general? His question. Fence heights, fence design, his question. Obviously, there's concern about the shutter screen. Question about whether, where do you have water when you drywall drains through? Concerns about the density of the buildings at that point of all, that's what I think.
Thank you very much.
Let me add in those questions that you brought up about how that is superior.
Yeah, that's absolutely our least is that that.
They will have potential sofas, but they're not supposed to have any hazardous materials or chemical type materials in storage facilities.
They are, they should have a lot of access to those units, we suspect.
There's a retention pond, you know, required. So there are no really wide issues typical for.
The, the, the pod is designed to, it's probably maybe a little quicker than these would be at the supply point, but definitely. It's going to release to the, I guess, is it the northwest side is it called? Against the condos. We're going to release at our site in a, you know, a squail at some point and it'll ultimately end up in the, the stream that's just to the south. It's in a, I believe, there's a, a conservation easement that we're not going to be impacting at all. So as a natural drainage point, right now, the site does fall that way in general, so we're not like converting any kind of drainage that already goes there. Obviously, the whole, the whole point of any kind of a pond, dry wet is to, you know, catch those large storm events, retain it or detain it, depending on how it, whatever it drives, and then release that at a slower rate than it is currently releasing on site now with all the, the foliage and the, the trees and the grass and whatever. So it'll be, it'll be released slower, like I said, than it is here on the ground, even though there's more, a lot more in the debris area, it'll be greater.
Since the topic of fencing was brought up, I don't recall seeing any designs for fencing in the submission, so we will, there are requirements for the types of fences, so if you can provide what those.
We can provide those with next applicant, the trustee application along with the dumpster screening details and things of that nature now that we have locations for those items.
Thank you.
Anybody have further questions?
I just have a question also back to the activity of storing. And I understand that someone on site. How do we even know if someone is storing something? Maybe tell them at least, don't do it. I got that part.
We have somebody on site all the time, walking, you know, they're walking, saying when they're not in the office, if we see somebody storing paint cans or something of that nature.
But you don't randomly just kind of choose to think, open up people's stuff and say?
We haven't in the past, no. And if we have any sort of suspicion, we would absolutely act out it. We haven't had this issue in the past. It's obviously an insurance issue for us as well. I mean, there's a lot of business reasons why we want to make sure that that's enforced. And we have cameras everywhere too, so the manager in the office can see if somebody might be loading up.
And if it's concerned, usually these storage facilities, either they're sprinklered or they're not sprinkled, they have firewalls. So if there is an incident, it's contained.
What if these have sprinklered, what would people would say?
Firewalls.
Firewalls, oh, no. The third story, I think, has to be sprinkled. But, and you know, the office, but the one story will have firewalls. And usually building code tells us what, you know, those firewalls are located. They're three hour calls with three hour doors. So it's basically, they're considered separate buildings here to try to prevent an incident, shall we say.
Name and address, sir?
Richard Schrock, seventy-one eighty-six Leighton Drive. I just have a comment to make about, well, I live in the development that's back in the wetlands area and the retention plan can be something that might affect the wetlands. So that's something that may have to be approved by ODNR. That's all I would.
Yeah, assuming you guys will be supplying the SWAP and everything, right? Yeah, so that, that needs to be affirmed, yeah.
The county engineer.
Yeah.
With the fire.
Answer your question, yeah.
Final civil to be a, and to make sure that anything that we use properly is, I say safe.
Anyone else like to speak from the audience? Any other comments or questions on the board?
Just one quick, one little quick question. On the, your, I apologize. The staff knows as far as the variances that are quote-unquote outstanding, those are ones that, there, there are three of those, is that correct? B, C and?
So I, I have on, on mine, I have B and C as still. Well, C is, I, it just hasn't been provided to us. B, we have to take a closer look at. I, I will, just to make it clear, if, you know, I understand there's a very valid reason why the landscape requirement in the southeast corner is not being met, but that would technically be a divergence. And I, again, I think there's reasonable reasons for asking for that, but just so we're all clear, if it's not meeting the text, then it is technically a divergence.
Okay, so is that something that we can work with you on to determine whether or not, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
It's a divergence. Same thing with like the street frontage build zone ratios according to seventy percent. We can't build in that area. So we're sort of argumentated by, you know, ten, twenty percent of that street front that's not buildable. So I'm not sure how to do those calculations. We were discussing that the other day, of how to do the calculations when it's not buildable. So perhaps we can do the calculations, discuss them with you and then determine whether or not it's a divergence and how that should best be handled. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we're probably finished today. We've already got, I believe, some ideas and things you have to complete. Christine is typically well aware of most of those.
That gets embarrassing, it's kind of awkward being here. So I'll have to follow up with you if there's like a list that you're going to produce.
Yeah, I will get that to you before.
So my items, we can send it to the applicant as we as a team work together. And if you want the muzzle colors, I can provide you with muzzle colors, precise and manufacturing product colors, which I would prefer.
Because most of the items and the details out there are available on the website?
We can put them on our Google Drive, yes. And I can give you my card of it as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, all.
We share the issue with the staff as well.
Anything further to do today?
I believe that's all our business.